Okay, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open up today's meeting of the Montague County Commission. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda, consent and approval with our county administrator, Renetta McClure. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. We have seven exonerations for $2,385.71 minutes from May 12th, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, $70,009.35, Cole Severance, $218.40. Magistrate Court, $50.54, 911, $10,481.28. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,822.06. Camp Muffley, $5,006.85.27. Mason Dixon Park, $817.78. Transportation levy, $221.058.53. Recreation levy, $3,100. Library levy, $108.517.86. And census valuation, $3,009.43.60. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $7,743.13. Home com-- no, I'm sorry, 911, $7,147.13. Camp Muffley, $535.56. For voucher total of $442,056.33. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for May 19th, 2021, and a file status report for fiduciary commissioners Beth LaBeau and Ryan Umina.
Move for approval, second.
We have first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any other fiduciary issues?
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is the introduction of new employees, personnel changes. I don't see Misty, so I assume that one you're reading that one for.
She submitted one to me last week. It's Alela Stevenson from Morgantown. It was going to be a part-time seasonal kitchen worker at $11 an hour and start date of 5/19/21. And then yesterday I got another one. Alexander Ruscin, R-U-S-C-I-N, from Reedsville. And he is going to be part-time seasonal maintenance, also 5/19/21 start date, $11.50 an hour.
Move for approval.
Oh, second, sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other personnel?
Not that I know of.
Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Comments from the public session. Do you have anybody from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, close comments from the public. Next item on the agenda, calling in grants.
I have requests for reimbursements for the C grant in the amount of $2,960.24. The next one's the Voca grant in the amount of $10,614.64. Then I have Governor's Highway Safety Program State Communities in the amount of $1,214.38. And lastly, impaired driving in the amount of $2,858.59.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Colleen. Next item on the agenda, moving along, his correspondence.
We received in the mail a legislative citation from the House Minority Leader Delegate Doug Scaff Jr. I don't know if you want me to read it or not.
It's pretty long, just.
Okay, just recognizes county officials and county personnel as essential workers.
Thank you.
The second item is a letter of thanks from Christian Help regarding the contribution of $25,000. Yeah, it's grant funding for fiscal year '21. That is all.
Okay, Jeff, do you have anything?
No.
Tom?
No.
Okay, I believe we all three received a letter from Congressman McKinley regarding the climate change, climate agenda in Congress. And there's a, there's an ask in the letter, so I asked that we move this to a work session, our staff reports discussion. Okay?
She's got it.
Give me a copy of that at some point, you'll give me a copy of that at some point.
Here, you can have this. Okay, unfinished business, done. New business.
Could I ask, since there's no one here except for Susan, and I know she probably has to wait a half hour, if we could just move to item G first, so she doesn't have to wait all.
Certainly.
Thank you.
We want to jump into ahead of the.
Yeah.
New business agenda. Item G, consideration to provide funding for the Visit Mountaineer Country CBV Tourism Advancement Fund Initiative for events in Montague County.
Move for approval, with discussion.
Okay, is there specific?
For $150,000 for this year.
Okay, so you're motioning that we provide $150,000, a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
If I could ask to open it up and just have a one minute, you know. Make your time work well, since you had to come.
Move to open up the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm just really here to express our appreciation for the confidence you place in us, to support the work that you do throughout the county in the form of providing the funds for us to reenact this tourism advancement fund. Events are important, and this is something that we will use prudently to attract and enhance what is going to serve our community through our tour, the advancement of the tourism economy. Are there any questions?
The only question I've already gotten received is people asking.
When?
And when, and also, how could they, can they apply for to be a board member on this commit, or this committee?
Oh.
Yeah, that was a question people, I'm already getting calls on.
Well, we, as I discussed in the work session, what I presented to you last week was essentially the summary of what we had in the past with a few little tweaks to try and, and address some of the questions that Commissioner Bloom had brought up. We have to get this in place, so I have to get my landing page out there. We will get the applications out there, and we have to form the commission, or the review committee. So we'll probably prepare a press release, will probably be the best way to do that, since there's been enough of this, there's been a good amount of press on this so far. And we'll get the information out to the community that way. And then we will, what's important is that we have individuals that understand tourism, because when we make our decisions, our decisions are not based on popularity or, or what feels good. It's all very data-driven, and we look at every dollar that we spend as what generates the return, the greatest return in investment in bringing and generating things within the community. So when we're looking at the statistics and the metrics in making decisions, or what's the size of the event, what is the, what is the, you know, what segment of the program does it meet? I mean, there's a lot of pieces of information that we require as well as part of the evaluation. So the committee is, is going to be one that's going to get that data, look at it based on the criteria that's there, and then make the decisions accordingly. But the, the big difference in this, and compared to the way we did it in the past, is these funds are for Montague County only, and these funds, we will be giving you reports, regular updates as far as this is what's been presented, the metrics that we tracked on a committee basis, because this one's going to be a little bit more challenging in the sense that in the past, there was a, originally a 90-day application date requirement prior to the date of your event. We're in a little bit different circumstances now, so we're, we're not out there trying to make exceptions for various and sundry groups, but in our environment where we are today, if nobody knew that this was going to be something, including us, that we might even be able to offer. So we're going to have to be a little more nimble and, and see, we're going to, I'm working on a, actually a tool, an online process, so that we can keep this as streamlined as possible, because having a bunch of meetings and getting a bunch of paper is not going to really suit us all well to get to turn things around quickly, so.
You hold there for a second, Susan, so to clarify things, we have a motion on the table to provide $150,000 in funding to this, to this, what do we call it, a?
Tourism Advancement Fund.
Tourism, TAF, Tourism Advancement Fund. And I would recommend that we just give them the $150 upfront and it's not be a, not be a installment thing, so that they can get started.
Okay.
So we have a mo, on that, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The second part of that is your actual process, and you had provided us a very detailed process, and the commission has two seats on this.
In, in the proposal that I presented last week, yes, but we're flexible with that, I mean.
Which we, that we appoint, so we'll need to make sure that we, once we approve this, we go ahead and we put that on another, on our list of vacancies that we need to fill. But I would, I would accept the motion that we go ahead and approve the processes as she had laid it out in terms of setting up the committee and running, running this program.
Yeah, I move that we accept the process and the review committee and the two appointed by Mon County Commission, one by the president and two by the board members of the.
Okay.
Second.
A second, okay, any further discussion on that? I mean, that's pretty clear.
Yeah, true.
Okay, all right, we have first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
I appreciate your support.
And appreciate what you said on the radio today, we heard you supporting the county commission.
This will be a very popular, it's already been a very popular topic, so we will do our best to represent everybody well.
Also, you had said that you have already talked to several other counties, and that they may be interested and want to know what we're doing, so they're watching us very carefully.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, we're open for business.
Yes, that's what we want to say.
You're going to let people know that and help our hotels and our restaurants and our retail, and it's great, so.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, moving back to the top of the agenda, new business agenda, consideration to accept the presentation of the 2021 land and personal property books and request for commissioners' signatures on oath and certificates by Mark Music, Assessor of Montague County.
Move to accept.
Second.
Second, Mark, do you have any discussion or anything you'd like to say regarding this thing?
They're all yours.
We have a first and a second, this is normal, we do this every year, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Consideration of proposal received by the county commission from the West Virginia Communities Risk Pool for the County General Liability and Workers' Compensation Insurance with the effective date of July 1, 2021. Have a motion to approve?
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Renetta, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Other than the amounts, the liability insurance, and we are receiving a dividend credit, you know, as members of the risk pool, if there's a savings throughout the year, they divide those, they divide that dividend up between all the counties that are a part of the risk pool, and our credit is $4,235, so every little bit helps.
Okay.
Liability insurance is $544,011, and that includes $7,000 worth of cyber, I'm sorry, the cyber risk of $3 million is, is a premium of $7,000, so that's included in with the liability insurance. Workers' comp is $193,502.
And what do you have for a total?
Including the dividend credit, $737,513.
Okay, that's what I have. And I'd like to note that we switched the risk pool a couple of years ago to save the county some money, but in doing so, we're actually getting better service and a better product, which is actually, that's no slight on our previous provider, but this product is built for county municipal governments, so it's a lot more efficient. We also wanted a more stable product without lot fluctuations in classroom years. The commercials market is pretty volatile, as we see with our health insurance, and rate increases and a lot of time covered, rate increases are covered a lot of times by stripping coverages. So it's good that we're, we have a good product, it is stable, and they're constantly expanding their services, not, not cutting their services. And the difference between this year's premium and last year's premium is $1,000, $1,365, which is a, it's not even a two-tenth of a percent increase, so it's very, very consistent. So we're getting what we actually wanted whenever we switched to them, so. We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider the, for approval, the annual memorandum of agreement for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 regarding funding pledge to West Virginia University Mon County Extension Service. Have a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? This is just our normal annual MOU between us and West Virginia, West Virginia University. We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to contribute $2,000 to health savings accounts for each employee participating in the high deductible health plan as part of the county's group health insurance, and establish that those contributions will be made in full at the inception of the plan year beginning August 1, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, just the totality of this, it's estimated that we have 168 employees that are on this plan, so it's a $336,000 investment in our employees, obviously if there's more or less, that number would change, but.
And it considerably lessens our costs of the insurance plan, if I'm not mistaken, by going with this kind of plan, we're, we're spending money to save money.
Correct. Okay, we have first and second, Renetta, did you have anything? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, to consider for approval, an appointment to the Montague County Development Authority. Renetta, do you want to indicate the individual?
I don't know where my paper is.
I have it here, if you.
Yeah, if you, yeah.
The individual is Matthew Born, he's a vice president from March Weston. This request was actually vetted by the executive board and approved, and then also vetted by the full Mon County Development Authority Board. So, do we have a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of an engagement letter with Ice Miller LLP to provide a strategic broadband pan for Montague County, have a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Okay, discussion, this is basically the formal engagement letter that formalizes the relationship between Ice Miller Whiteboard and the Montague County Commission. So this essentially puts that, that working relationship into place, so it's necessary to move forward. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Corollary to that is, in, in that letter of engagement, it asks the commission to certify that the fundings or funding is available. So I, I went back and forth with them, and they asked just a simple letter from the commission indicating that, so.
Do we need to move that we send the letter?
Okay, so the.
To verify.
The president, I'll go ahead and send the letter to verify, and that way we don't have to wait to another meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we already covered Susan's. Consideration of rental rates for Montague County Extension Services and 4-H Center indoor and outdoor event spaces.
Move for approval with discussion, so you can explain it.
Second.
We have a second, okay, discussion? Okay, basically, in your folder, the, the rates are out there. We had been looking at the rates to rent the extension building, and the rates that are out there now, again, this has been a trial and error, we kind of, we discovered that we think they're a little high, so we've adjusted those rates to make it more feasible for nonprofits and any, everyday individuals to be able to utilize the facility, so we're putting these rates into effect. Myland Park still manages the building for us, they manage the building through the end of June, and then we'll go into kind of a hybrid model, where we'll have an individual that be dedicated to the building, and then they'll work with Myland Park in regards to events and stuff, so we'll be working on that going forward. But we want to put these rates in effect now, no sense in waiting until the beginning of the year, and so that's, that's what they are. Did I miss anything, Renetta? We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other new business? Last couple of weeks, that's been enough.
Yeah.
Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Mr. Music, how are you today? Good morning.
I just have one thing, just to inform that we have started our fieldwork, so just to let the commission know. Public and media, they've received letters that we've already mailed out to them for the districts in which we're in. So right now we're in Fourth and Fifth Ward, so there'll be seeing staff out there. Of course, the letter explained everything to them, if they had any questions, if someone was out there they weren't quite sure, please contact the office. So that's where we started at this point, new construction, of course, goes on every day in, in every district, but as for our fieldwork for the residential side, this starts our three-year process.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, reports from county commissioners, Tom?
Yes, actually, good news. First of all, Jeff and I attended by Zoom the Montague County Teen Court Board, and we decided, and we already will go out in the newspaper, we will be seeking a qualified individual on a contractual basis to oversee the overall operations of the Mon County Teen Court Program, and we had to stop this during the COVID and other situations, so we've reenacted it, and maybe if Jeff wants to say anything more after, when it's his turn, but I just want to say that that position will be opened up, and we're excited that that'll be for next year, school year. Also, we attended last night, both Jeff and I, the Volunteer Firemen's Association Meeting, and we, it was over in Westover. And finally, I, I have a funny story to say, that I jokingly will say move over the Kennedys and move over the Bush clan. Yesterday, there was election again in Pennsylvania, and my son-in-law, who is the, one, elected as one of the two Democratic Committee people of the ward, and Lindsay, my daughter, decided to get involved, and she's the newly-elected judge of elections for, for the second ward in Philadelphia running the election, so I'm real proud. So the Bloom family has started slowly, so look out. Thank you, so I'm very proud of them, okay?
Jeff?
As to the teen court, that's a, it's a slight change in the way we're doing that, that program this year. Going forward, we're looking more for, rather than a straight county employee, it'll be on a contract basis, like Tom said, so any, any attorneys or anyone else out there that has an interest in, in running that program, where the, the ads should be coming out in the paper, and we'll be accepting essentially bid proposals, for lack of a better term, on that. Had an opportunity to see the, the new glass factory in Star City, just want to say it's a beautiful use of architecture and, and a nice example of using the, the history of an area, and they're really having it blend into its surroundings, and it's a beautiful, beautiful facility, and it's kind of, kind of development building I'd really love to see more of around the county, and hopefully that'll, that'll keep going.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay. Since the last Wednesday, last Thursday, I had a red team meeting, Development Authority meeting, and then Extension Services Board meeting that night. Friday, we had staff reports, and then in the afternoon, I moderated a panel presentation put on by the Morgantown Area Partnership for Infrastructure Week. Monday, we had a call with county officials, which I'd like to discuss a little bit, regarding our steps forward in response to the, the developments that have come out regarding COVID protocols. So I'd like to discuss that a little bit here in a second. And also, Monday was tax day, hopefully everybody got their taxes in on time, I got mine in about 10 o'clock that night. Tuesday, a monthly breakfast meeting with Joe Statler, Ron Lidle, and Frank Tavano. Today is a regular day, though I have my MAP board meeting this evening at 4 o'clock. Tomorrow morning, I have the Myland Park Executive Board meeting, and we have our jail bill meeting tomorrow?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we have jail bill meeting, and then in the evening, we have an MMPO meeting. And Friday, we have staff reports. So as I mentioned about the COVID, I'm sorry, we don't have staff reports on Friday. As I mentioned about the COVID protocols, we had a county call on Monday. Last Friday, after, on Thursday, when the CDC came out with their recommendations regarding masks, and then on Friday, when the state changed their guidance regarding the mask, we thought it necessary to have a call with all county officials. We had representatives from the city of Morgantown, or, or 911, I'm sorry, all of our first responders, all the county offices, I think there's about like 27 people on the call, just really kind of walk through, what's this mean as far as how we run our county? And we're still working forward on some clear guidance, but for the most part, we're operating our buildings, and you guys jump in, if, if I say something that doesn't jive with your thoughts, and Mark, you can, you can jump in too. But we're basically operating our guidance under the same, with, we're taking baby steps to make changes as we go along. And as Dr. Smith clearly said, we're, we're following his recommendations for how he runs the Health Department building. So essentially, anybody facing the public, we're asking that our employees be masked, if they're facing the public, and we ask when people come in the building, they still be masked, because we don't know what their current vaccination situation is. Inside our offices, consistent with the way we have been operating, if you're vaccinated, you can, you can work without, without a mask on inside your office, but we ask when we're facing the public and dealing with the public that we, we mask up. So if we take these small steps, Dr. Smith had indicated, it takes about two weeks to see effect of each change. So making so many changes at once isn't, isn't a good idea, it's better to just make small changes and make sure in two weeks that our, our numbers haven't changed. And we're going to have another development in two weeks when the state, as of our birthday, the state's birthday, they're going to remove all masking requirements for vaccinated or non-vaccinated. So we're, we're just figuring it would be better to slowly, cautiously, kind of dip our toe in the water and, and move forward.
We made two modifications, one is that we're not going to take temperatures anymore, so that's going to stop. And also, and Mark suggested that we do our numbers, but don't increase them drastically, but we're going to increase numbers, so instead of four, we'll have new numbers, so everyone isn't lined up in the hallway, but we will be adding numbers. And as you said, it takes two weeks, so we will see what happens, and after those two weeks, then we, we can make other decisions. But those are the two big changes.
Yeah, we had put limits on our buildings.
Yes.
And individual offices, like how many people from the public can be in at, at one time, so we're, we're looking at those and going to adjust those accordingly.
We, we should still proceed with extreme caution, as Dr. Smith indicated, half of the cases in Mon County now are of the UK variant, which is a more contagious strain, so it's still out there. So we, we, we want to proceed cautiously and not go crazy all at once, but, but we're, you know, we're getting back, back to opening up.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, it's good to say that to, to a person, all the, we, we're basically all in agreement across the county. Ken Moss participated from the city, we're pretty much in agreement with, you know, how, how we'll operate both of our entities. So it was just, it was helpful to just have that conversation and try to figure out, or, or, you know, kind of piece out together how we respond. And we've done that through the whole COVID crisis, something happens, and then we communicate and cautiously and effectively plan our response, and I think that's, it's worked for the past year or so, and continue to.
And I want to make it real clear too, that both the city manager and assistant manager were there, and I think we have a new working relationship with this new administration over at the city of Morgantown, with this new administration over the city of Morgantown, and by them giving us their input, we were able to come up with better solutions. And I think that is how hopefully we'll move forward on a number of topics.
Correct, on a number of topics. Uh, this afternoon, we're gonna have a work session with Ice Miller, our new broadband consultant, and I believe, uh, Mayor Kueke will be here. I've asked him and Emily, but they, they both have other events, but they're, you know, we're, it's, it's good that we're working together on a lot of these important issues, so. Having said it, and we are working on other policy changes. Um, we're, we're looking at the, um, the, the possibility of how we entice our, our remaining employees to, to get vaccinated. So we're working on some of those things, but that, that'll be coming out in the next couple of weeks, so.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.